All right, it's officially six. Good evening, everybody. Now called to order the June 3, 2024 Meetings of Committees of Council. Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Mr. Gleese?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And President Bakay?
Here.
Few reminders at the top of the meeting. This is an excellent time to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. Tonight, we have meetings of committees of council. There are no general public comment periods during this meeting. However, if committee chairs call for comments from the public, pardon me. However, committee chairs will call for comments from the public for specific agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must begin with your name and block of residence for the meeting record. Two announcements at the top of the meeting. Resolution number 53 is being removed from the Community Planning Committee meeting agenda this evening. Also, an announcement, council will be holding a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 25 at 6:30 PM. This is due to the volume of items on the June legislative agenda. We typically have one meeting a month in the summer, but we will need to have the second meeting this month. All right, our first item tonight is the approval of the May 6, 2024 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any council comments on the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Bakay?
Aye, thank you. All right, we begin with the Committee of the Whole this evening. Our first item on the Committee of the Whole agenda is the Home Rule Study Commission Update. Commissioner Adams.
President Bakay, members of City Council, thank you all for having me here this evening. Just here to give a brief update on what we've been doing and what we'll be doing in the near future. So our, since I was last here, we have met twice. The first meeting, of the two, we were discussing forms of government, primarily the office of the mayor, specifics about what the mayor, election of the mayor, issues of multiple offices outside employment and such. We're currently in the process of writing up charter language for that position, as well as we also discussed the Office of the Solicitor and began discussions of appointment, appointed officials, directors. So that's where we will be picking up this Thursday is the plan, the agenda at 6:30. After that, we met with PFM from Philadelphia. Thank you Mayor Sarachi for making them available to us. Very, very interesting meeting with a lot of information that we've taken, hopefully has made a impact on the commission. We also continue, I know public engagement has become, is an important issue, one with City Council, public engagement, we have done an amazing amount. I would love to be able to take any credit for it, but it really comes down to Commissioner Ruffo who has organized it. If there is an event in the city, there is a table from Home Rule there to just educate the public about what is going on. I think the next one, at least the next one that I'm aware of off the top of my head is this Saturday because I will be there Saturday afternoon. But again, Commissioner Ruffo has done just an amazing job. So I think all of us owe her a great deal of gratitude on the amount of effort she's putting into the public engagement, a very important part of the whole process. So that is my update. If there are any specific questions that you have for me or items you'd like me to take back to the commission?
Thank you so much. A question first, and then I'll open it up to the members of council. The presentation from PFM I was watching from home, and I thought it was incredibly well-done presentation, included a lot of information, but was very clear. I'm just curious your thoughts after hearing that presentation. I know that there is, especially in terms of heading into conversations about financial powers granted in the charter. What decisions are upcoming for that and what were your general thoughts about that presentation?
Okay, first, I can speak for myself as a commissioner or myself personally. I'm not speaking for the entire Home Rule Commission. As I said a minute ago, the PFM presentation was eye-opening. You know, local government, government at any level is always run on a shoestring. It's the nature of the beast and it's the way things work. But to see the level of the problem that is occurring right now, and one of the reasons why writing the Home Rule Charter is so important. So what I took from this personally is just that, that it is a very important step, it is absolutely imperative that we do get the Home Rule Charter written and passed so that it is ready to take effect at the beginning of the new budget year. It's not something that I personally think can be put off down the road, and whatever we can do to try to get that through is very important, whatever support council can provide. I think that's a very important aspect of it. The specific details on issues of budget, we have a Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Commissioner McGrann is the chair of that. He has taken that and they have been meeting, they're meeting, I think they're next, they actually met this morning and they're meeting again next Monday. So the whole budget process is one of the main agenda items I think they have for next Monday. This past, this morning's meeting was discussions of the controller, role of controller, and whether or not it is a appointed or should remain, whether it should be an appointed position, whether it should be an elected position. So my understanding is they will be addressing the budget issues next week.
Thank you. I will put it up to questions or comments from members of council. Council Hirsch?
Council President, may I? Thank you, Commissioner Adams. Appreciate it. You got this question a lot, but I'm going to ask it again. How do you feel about the timeline? I mean, I guess you're speaking for yourself and not the commission, but the timeline is really important given the states that are involved here. So how are you feeling about it?
Well, I do write the agenda, so I, the timeline does weigh heavily on me. I kind of jokingly say if, would like that if it were possible to have a time machine to November 6 so I can see how it all turns out. I think we are moving along at a pace that will get it done. In the past, I've said I am not concerned. I think we're moving along very well, and I have no doubts that, you know, we'll have a charter written and ready for the November election. I can honestly say I'm not as convinced. I still think we are doing okay. We have gotten dragged down, slowed down in some issues with form of government. Hopefully, we can resolve them and move forward. Once we do, I think we'll be able to pick up the pace. So personally, I think we're okay. I just would, I would like to be a little more comfortable about that, but I'm not too concerned right now. We have, with this issue, have scheduled a special meeting for Saturday, June, I've got to pick my brain, June 29, I think it is, June 29. I'm just trying to remember which, what date is the Saturday. So the goal of that is to hopefully get us up, back up to speed so we're right where we should be. And if we are able to accomplish what we need to in the next two meetings and we don't need that meeting, you know, that would be great. Nobody wants to spend a summer Saturday sitting in here.
True. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Additional council comments or questions? Commissioner Adams, thank you so much for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And please, we're meeting 6:30 this Thursday. Any, anyone who would attend in the audience or from council, please do. Any input is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item for the Committee of the Whole this evening is Council Resolution 42, 2024. Oh, recognizing Immigrant Heritage Month, and that was actually introduced by Councilor Med, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. As you are aware, we celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month and World Refugee Day by way of resolution of council. And as someone who came to this country and specifically here in Lancaster as a refugee, I think it is important that we continue to recognize our refugee and immigrant neighbors and their sacrifices as well as their contributions. So this June 20 will be World Refugee Day, and this resolution marks June as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Lancaster. And as we continue to see the need for municipalities and cities to accept and welcome refugees, it is exciting to see that Lancaster is still holding up its commitment to our immigrant and refugee communities and continue to be a leader and a shining example across the country on what a welcoming city looks like. And that concludes my remarks, Council President.
Thank you very much. Any additional council discussion on Resolution 42? Comments from the public on Resolution 42? Right, hearing none, I will make a motion that we move Resolution 42 to our council agenda on June 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item for Committee of Whole is Resolution number 43. This is recognizing Pride Month in the city of Lancaster. We were actually out at the Pride Month flag raising today. I know I was joined by several of you. Thank you so much for those who could attend. We like to, I like to put this forward each year on council to get it on the books. The resolution itself was drafted with the assistance of Lancaster Pride, the organization hosting Lancaster Pride Festival on June 15, 2024. And as we mentioned earlier today, it's been sort of a fraught first six months of the year in Lancaster for LGBTQ community, and we're looking forward to celebrating pride this month and hopefully looking toward a brighter second half of the year in our community. Any council comments on the resolution? From the public? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we move Resolution number 43 to our meeting on June 11.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's my agenda. Another one under the Committee of the Whole, Resolution number 44. This is recognizing Juneteenth. Council Craig, you're introducing this one.
Thank you, Council President. I feel compelled to read this yet again, but I'm going to read it.
Thank you.
Whereas the road to freedom has been arduous for Africans, and the important work for equality continues today. And whereas historically, due to its location along the Mason Dixon Line, Lancaster County played a significant role in the freedom of enslaved Africans by way of the Underground Railroad. And whereas Lancaster was home to a number of prominent black and white abolitionists who advocated for freedom for all Africans, and whereas according to the United States Census Slave Registry, all Africans living in Lancaster were free by 1850. And whereas on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation declaring that all African, enslaved Africans held in the States then in rebellion shall then be henceforth and forever free, and prompting all enslaved Africans to demand their freedom. And whereas word traveled to the edge of the nation slowly, but made it to Galveston, Texas, the westernmost Confederate state, where General Granger read aloud the Emancipation Proclamation on June 19, 1865, two years later, sharing slavery, sharing that slavery had been abolished, and whereas this day came to be known as Juneteenth, and was the first, and was first honored the very next year in Texas on June 19, 1866, with a jubilant, hopeful celebration filled with picnics, music, prayer within the black community. And whereas Juneteenth celebrations take place across the nation each year in honor of the resilience of the black community and in homage to all Africans who bravely paved the way for freedom in America. And whereas 49 states and the District of Columbia recognized Juneteenth as a holiday or a day of observance, including Pennsylvania, which adopted Juneteenth National Freedom Day as a state holiday in 2019. And President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Act in 2001, 2021, making the day a federal holiday. Whereas the city of Lancaster will celebrate Juneteenth as a city government holiday for the first time, that would have been last year. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Lancaster, that June 19, 2024 be celebrated as Juneteenth in the city of Lancaster, and all Lancastrians are invited to reflect upon the spirit of the day, embrace the beauty of, beauty and diversity, and pledge to honor the dignity, culture, and achievement of Africans in every sphere of life in the city, Commonwealth, and nation. And that is our Juneteenth resolution, and there, I do have a couple of announcements that go along with the Juneteenth, not necessarily the resolution, but that kind of encompassed Juneteenth. There's going to be Juneteenth celebrations and Black Music Month celebrations in the month of June. I believe we just missed one, June 1, The Best of Enemies, that was a movie that was going to be at the library. On June 8, Bob Marley, One Love, Movie Mixer and Reception, that's going to be at the Lancaster County Library at 1 o'clock on June 8. The annual flag raising, which will be here at City Hall at 10:45 on June 19. And Imani Edgetainers will be at the Millersville Ware Center on June 22 at 5:00. And the autobiography of Miss Jane Pittman will also be at 151 North Queen Street, and that is June 29 at 1 o'clock. So those are all the announcements that I have, and that is the resolution. I'll make a motion to move this to full council on the 11.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Council Craig, thank you so very much for that. And Mr. Harris, if we could just make sure we make that small change adjusting the year for the city of Lancaster. Thank you. Thank you. The last item on the Committee of Whole agenda is Resolution number 45. This is, I lost my page. This is recognizing Genesis Castro, a student at McCaskey High School for her athletic accomplishments. This is being introduced by Councilor Diaz. Council Diaz, if you would.
I'll just say a few things because I would, I would want her to be here to hear everything.
Sure.
She basically was at the side Fritz International, and she threw a disc of 139 feet, and she broke the school record at McCaskey on May the 25. She also completed a PIAA state championship and won a gold medal. Not only am I excited to present it to her because she is a McCaskey junior, but because I was a McCaskey as well. So that's what we'll be moving forward then to our next council meeting.
Thank you very much, Council Diaz, and thank you for bringing this to us. We'll be excited to be joined by Genesis at our next meeting, and I think some of her friends and family members as well, is that right?
Yes, some of her schoolmates as well.
Great. Excellent. Any council comments on that resolution? From the public? Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we move Resolution number 45 to our meeting on June 11, 2024.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes the Committee of the Whole this evening. We will then move to the Personnel Committee. Councilor Gleest?
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee has only one item on the agenda for tonight. It is the nomination of Mimi Shapiro for reappointment to the Shade Tree Commission. Mrs. Shapiro has served on the Shade Tree Commission for over 13 years, and her five-year term expired on December 31, 2023, and she has expressed her interest in serving for another five-year term on the board. And she has, for support of all the members of the Shade Tree Commission and the Public Works Department, for her nomination for reappointment. It's also important to mention that she, there are no other candidates currently interested in filling this role. Are there any questions or comments regarding this nomination from all the members of the committee? From council as a whole? From the public? So now I'll make a motion to move this nomination to our next full council meeting.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Council Gleest. Our next item is the Finance Committee. Councilor Royal?
Thank Council President. This evening, we have six items on the agenda for this evening. I'm actually going to move number, or item number five, Administration Resolution number 46, 2024, to the top of the agenda. This is authorizing purchase of a fire engine. And with that, I'd like to invite Chief Hutchison to the podium to speak on the item.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, this will be for the purchase of a new suppression engine. It will be replacing a engine that was purchased in 1999 and following the 15-year replacement plan that was adopted back in 2019. We're still catching up. We have one more engine that is a 2000, so that'll come up in the near future, but that was just, the engine was just rebuilt in that one, so we're not too, we're not in any rush to replace that one. But this was a, this was a demo piece of apparatus that was offered to us by the dealership that was built with the specs that we had from our last engine that was purchased in
Thanks, Chief. Just a question on my end. So just to kind of clarify, these lease payments were already built into the budget, so this was an anticipated?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions from the committee?
Senator, Councilor? What is the actual price on the purchase?
The actual price for this engine is $642,914. The same engine, if it was ordered today, would be a two-year build time with a $140,000 price increase, and that's just, that's not including increases after each year as you're waiting for that engine to arrive.
And that's a complete purchase, is not a lease, is that correct?
That is the complete purchase price.
Thank you, Chief.
And that's going to be paid in annual installments?
Over 10 years, I'm sorry. Yes, that'll be paid in installments over 10 years of $88,763.91 per year for 10 years.
Any additional questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from full council?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilor Royal. I just had a quick question. The end of that is replacing, do we end up selling that, or what happens to the replacement?
That'll end up being sold probably through the dealership itself. They'll resell that and take the cash from that sale. It could be anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000. It's just, it all depends the needs that are out there for it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Councilor Royal.
And Councilor Med, any questions or comments from full council?
Councilor Royal, may I? Thank you, Chief. Can you just talk a little bit about, you know, because this is a long-term investment, right? And, you know, obviously, when we met earlier this year and we looked at the old fire engine, you know, it's not going to cut going forward, but can you just talk a little bit about how this engine fits into our long-term kind of understanding of what the capabilities need to be for fire protection in the city and maybe thinking about some of the development that's being built in the city as well? Can you maybe talk about how this fits into the long-term strategy for?
Yeah, so this new engine will be replacing, well, not replacing, the engine that it will go in service for is our rescue engine, so that'll carry all our tech rescue stuff. And then this one is- And then this one is designed with separate boxes to carry all our specialized rope, high-angle, low-angle equipment, some airbags for vehicle rescue in case somebody's trapped underneath a car or any kind of machinery, and also have all our vehicle extrication equipment on it. So as, as we move forward and has all the updated safety features of what a new apparatus has.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from council?
Councilor. Chief, I, I, maybe I missed it, but the funds from the engine that are, that would be sold, will that be applied to the loan or will it be used in a different manner?
I'd have to refer to the solicitor on that, on how those funds come back into the city, if it goes to the general fund or if it comes into the Fire Bureau Fund.
It comes back into the general fund, which is the Fire Bureau Fund, essentially.
Yeah.
Those funds will, will just come back into the, the general operating fund for the city. And I can't underscore how much work went into getting this and that we are, we are purchasing a, is this a demo?
This is a demo, correct.
So we're purchasing a demo model because we were able to get it at a reduced price and know exactly when it would be delivered, whereas other fire bureaus and departments across the country are on these really long wait times and spending a lot of money making repairs, and we're going to avoid that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilor Kleest?
I'm sorry about that. Good evening, Chief, thank you.
Good evening.
Could you tell us how the purchase of this new engine will improve the service in the Fire Department for the community?
Again, it'll enhance all the safety features for the firefighters. It's all up-to-date safety features that required by NFPA. It, it will be a more reliable engine. We just, we spent a lot of money on repairing one of the engines that was down for a few months, so we're, we're going to keep that one as a reserve. We're hoping not to have that happen with, as we move newer apparatus into reserve, so we always have a backup and keeping with the 15-year replacement plan that was adopted by the council. So it just, it, it'll, in the long term, it'll save funds and it'll, it'll be up-to-date equipment for, for us to use and for the citizens to receive the services that we provide.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Any questions for the public? Thank you, Chief Hutchison.
Thank you.
With that, I'll motion to move Administration Resolution Number 46, 2024, to the next meeting of council.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll bump back to the top of the agenda, Administration Bill Number 6, 2024, which is amending the city's employees' pension ordinance. This bill is to adjust the order, the language in the ordinance to reflect the current collective bargaining agreements for all unions. I'll invite Director Campbell to the podium to clarify or elaborate more on the resolution.
Yeah, so as Councilor Royal said, this is amending the current pension ordinance. The Auditor General audits our pension plans for compliance, and in the most recent audit, they pointed out that there were some inconsistencies between the language of the current fire and police pensions, or the police pension ordinances, and the language of the respective collective bargaining agreements. So the inconsistency in the language is the result of changes to the agreements over the years, as well as some revisions to Pennsylvania law, which requires us to update the legal citations in the city's ordinance. So we've worked to correct the ordinance based on these inconsistencies, and we've reviewed the revisions with the respective unions, and they did not propose any additional revisions. So just a couple of examples of the changes include citations of specific codes like Title 11, Chapter 143, and then discussion of some longevity pay based on current collective bargaining agreements, and then some service increment wording based on when an individual is hired, again because of the collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any questions or comments from the committee? Any questions or comments from full council?
If I may.
Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Director Campbell. So you're pretty much just saying that these are mostly clerical changes and changes to references in law and things like that. It's not like any changes to any financial components of the pension plan?
Correct. Yeah, there's no substantive, substantive changes in it. It's just simply corrections to update based on the collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from full council? Any questions from the public? So I will motion to move, and forgive me, Director Campbell, clarification, this is one is okay for the next full meeting?
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you. I will motion to move Administration Bill Number, excuse me, Administration Bill Number 6, 2024, for first reading on the June 11th meeting. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. The second item on the agenda this evening is Bill Number 8, 2024. This is authorizing the issuance of bonds for debt refinancing, and we're actually going to speak on Bill Number 8 as well as Bill Number 9. Both of these items are referencing a bond refinance for the City of Lancaster, which terms are not yet finalized, but Director Campbell and our friend Angel Coto, Daryl Peck are here to speak on these, both of these bills. Director Campbell?
Okay. Yeah. So we are bringing to you tonight these two administrative bills. Ultimately, it's only going to be one ordinance that will be passed, but I'll explain a little bit why there are two. We, they will authorize either the issuance of a bond or a bank note to buy out a lease and to reimburse some land acquisition costs. I'm going to give some background on this, and Daryl is, is handing you some information that he will talk about in just a minute as well. So we're bringing this evening approximately, it's about 8.9 million in costs that will be financed as debt. This amount is a combination of two different expenses, and neither of these expenses are actually new. So the first expense is a repayment to the ARPA fund for land that we acquired in 2021 with ARPA funds. The land was a purchase for the water infrastructure system, and at the time of the purchase, there was a possibility that the purchase would be allowable through ARPA. But however, once all of the various final rolls of ARPA came out, we confirmed that we could not use ARPA funding for these, for this purchase, and that was confirmed in 2021. So in August of 2021, council approved the Administrative Bill Number 19-2021, which approved the purchase of the land with ARPA funds, but also required that another funding source be found within three years should the purchase not be allowable through ARPA. So because the purchase is not allowable, we're now needing to finance this purchase through debt financing to repay ARPA. And so the amount of this piece of debt is approximately six and a half million if it's financed as a bond. It, it might be a little bit less if it's a bank note, but that's approximately. The second series of this debt relates to a pump station also for the water infrastructure system. This is, well, through a lease, a private company built a water pump station for the water system in 2013. I think it may have been completed in 2014. And at that time, we entered into a lease agreement to cover the cost of building the pump station plus, plus interest as part of that lease agreement. The lease agreement required that we actually buy out the lease after 120 monthly payments. We technically pay the 120th payment in January of 2025. However, as we looked at financing for this land acquisition and the cost associated with any debt financing, it just made more sense to buy out the lease a few months early in conjunction with this ARPA repayment that I just mentioned. So we currently have the lease payments budgeted into our annual water budget, and Daryl will talk about this in a few minutes, but this buyout will actually save slightly in interest, which means a slight reduction to the budget expenses that we're currently paying. And so the amount of this one is approximately 2.4 million. And so then a couple additional notes before Daryl comes. As I mentioned, this is not funding new initiatives. The pump station payments are already included in the budget, and the land acquisition is required to be financed, refinanced this year. These are both for the water system, so the debt repayments come from the Water Enterprise Fund. And then I, I mentioned this earlier, but we're introducing two different bills tonight, but we'll ultimately only need one of those to be voted on. We're introducing both a bill for bond financing and a bank note. But this is going to allow us the possibility of, of either of these as we're still receiving proposals for financing. I'm going to talk a little bit about the numbers.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Daryl Peck with Concord Public Finance. With Tina's introduction there, the presentation I handed out has a little bit more narrative to it, and certainly I'll touch on some things, the highlights again, even though Tina did touch on a number of them. We have the two components that she talked about, the reimbursement of land acquisition. We're going to call that Series A, just for nomenclature. And then the acquisition of the pump station is Series B. The numbers of the plan of finance and the estimated source and uses are there in the table. The reimbursement to the ARPA funds will be about 5.9 million. The acquisition of the pump station will be about $2.3 million. So the total cost of the actual projects is a, is a little over $8.2 million. There's, there is capitalized interest on the land reimbursement cost. The reason for that is, and I'll touch on this later, is, is to really allow time for the city go through the PUC process to be able to raise, raise water rates, because that actually will be new debt per se, meaning it's not in the budget. Tina already alluded to, in the pump station, that's already really in the budget because you're already paying that, so there's no need to capitalize interest there. And then with the related conventional costs for, for a bond issue or a bank loan for that matter, the total borrowing for the land cost will be about 6.5 million, and the, for the pump station acquisition, about 2.4 million, or for a total of about 8.9 million. The terms of the two financing components, the Series A or the land acquisition will be over a 20-year term, and the Series B for the pump station will be about 12 years. Think about why we're doing that, it's because the pump station is already 10 years, 10 years old, so we don't want to do another financing for 20 more years, because then it's, not that we'd be over the life, but I think it's more reasonable. If you were financing that pump station today, you'd probably do it for a term of 20 years. So we're trying to imagine appropriate remaining useful life. And we're also doing the two separately so we can kind of see those work together. You know, you have the, the ARPA reimbursement for the land acquisition as kind of one note, and then the pump station as a separate note, just for administrative purposes and tracking purposes. Flipping over to page two, the repayment structures and budgetary impacts, I touched on this, so the Series A, again, the land, there'll be no budgetary impact for the remainder of 2024 and 2025. Again, that's to allow time for the city to go through the, through the PUC process and increasing of rates, user rates. So when full impact begins in 2026, the estimated, and I stress estimated, as you know, annual debt service for this, for this piece of the financing will be about $530,000 a year, you know, through and including 2044. The Series B for the pump station, again, currently being leased and operated by the city, your existing annual lease payments are about $268,000. This will allow full impact in 2025, again, because you're already paying those dollars. So again, they're already in the budgets. So that's clearly a transferance of obligation, meaning if you were continuing on with the lease, you'd still be paying that amount. Because we're able to do a little bit better on interest rate, the estimated annual debt service will be about $260,000. Again, that'll begin in '25 through 2036, and again, that's less than already in the budget. So you'll have some, a modest amount of budgetary savings in the water fund with respect to the pump station acquisition. Debt service on both, both the Series are expected to be paid from the water fund. And I, I put a financing schedule here, I, there's maybe a little change here, but we're already even bank loan request proposal process, and then we'll also be looking at that bond issue, and I'll explain the ordinances again at the very end here. But the plan here for, for timing, of course, tonight is the review of the plan of finance with the Finance Committee to consider the referral to City Council. The plan was to have the first readings of the note ordinance and debt, bond ordinance originally on June 11th, if I'm correct, council. We're going to move that to the 25th. Okay. And then, so if we decide to move forward with a bank, bank note, we could do that ordinance as early as July the 9th, where you'd actually enact the note ordinance and you'd accept the bank loan proposal. You know, if we needed, I only flagged it here, August 5th would be another Finance Committee meeting, if necessary, if there's something we need to come back before this body with. And then we'd be closing on a bank loan, if we do a bank loan, on August 7th. If we determine to move forward with a bond issue, we'd of course probably do nothing on July, July the 9th, do the bond auction in the morning of August 13th, and do the bond ordinance on August 13th, and then we close on September 10th. And that would be within the required three-year, or the maximum three years that you had to actually complete disfinancing and do the reimbursement to the ARPA funds. So if I may, I, I know, why are we doing two? We're not doing two. We're not doing a note and a bond. We'll be doing one or the other. For those on council, you know how you go through the motion process. So the purpose of doing, introducing a note ordinance and bond ordinances, a lot of the language, kind of legalese, if you will, in those ordinances are very different, and if we only do one, there's a lot of modifications or amendments to the ordinance. So again, we're starting with two, we'll obviously only move forward and complete one. With the deferral of those two weeks, you know, we may even know by June 25th of which route we're going to go. So we may actually only introduce one of those forms of ordinances. I won't promise we'll do that, but we may be able to do that with the extra two weeks. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. And again, that's the process we moved, we plan to move forward with.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Peck. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Any questions or comments from full council?
Council Royal.
Council President.
Question for you, Mr. Peck. What is the rate environment like now in comparison to the last time you did a bond issue, which was probably early 22?
22.
Yeah. Out of my own curiosity.
Either good news or bad news, they were very good in 22. They're cer, as, as you know, as you hear, they're certainly higher today than they were in 2022. But remember, just because rates are higher than they were two or three years ago does not mean they're what we'll call high. I think, you know, some people will remember when rates were, you know, very high. So, I mean, we're expecting sort of in the high, high fours, hopefully under five.
So that is what I thought you were going to say.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're in tune then.
Thank you, Council President. Any other questions or comments from full council?
Council Royal, if I may. Council Med. Thank you. I just had a quick question about the land cost reimbursement. If this was originally paid for by ARPA, does that mean that ARPA dollars would be reavailable then with the 5.9 million? Then what is our timeline that we have to spend them before we are unable to? Sorry.
Yes, thank you. I, I will say they need to be obligated by the end of this year. So we do need to make a decision on how we're going to spend them by the end of this year, but we have until 2026 to spend them then.
So would we be able to use them as revenue replacement for next year, 2025?
Yes, and that I believe would be the administration's recommendation, so.
Thank you. And then just one last question. This refinancing, this won't affect our credit rating or anything of that nature?
No.
Good.
Yeah. In fact, we just received an updated credit rating from, from Moody's with a positive result, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. My final question is, given the reallocation of these ARPA funds, what, if this, if this moves at the current timeline, when would we plan to have that presented to council about the remaining ARPA funds that are available?
So it will be in line with the budget cycle this year, so in the next few months here, you would, you would see that.
Thank you.
That concludes my questions. Council Royal, thank you, Director Campbell. Thank you, Councilor Med. Any other questions or comments from full council? Any other questions or comments from full council?
And just to clarify again, we, the motions that I'll make, and I'll take each of these separately, will be for bills eight and nine. The motion will be to do the first reading on June 23rd, and this will allow us to get more time to finalize the details on what we'll be moving forward for a final reading.
Correct, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you both for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'll move to move Administration Bill Number 8, 2024, to the June 25th meeting for first reading.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And in line with the ordinance, Bill Number, I will move to, excuse me, I will motion to move Bill Number 9, 2024, to the June 25th meeting for first reading.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Make sure I am on the right spot, so staying in line. Item Number 4, which also relates to Bills Number 8 and 9, is Administration Resolution Number 54, 2024. This is the authorization of appointment for a special counsel for the bond refinancing. Typically, with any debt that's taken on by the city, there is a requirement that the city obtains counsel. I would invite Director Campbell to speak more on the resolution.
Yes, thank you. I don't have a whole lot more to say than that, but yeah, like Councilor Royal just said, any debt financing requires some additional legal support for legal matters related to both bond and bank note financing. Rhonda F. Lord has been appointed in the past in this role, and has actually been approved as a, through a resolution in this role, but has since switched to law firms. So therefore, this resolution would appoint Rhonda F. Lord as a partner now with Saxon and Stump as our bond counsel, and she'll serve as the counsel for the debt financing that we were just talking about.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Any questions or comments from full council? And keep it in line, so that way this is in sync with the other ordinances. I will motion to move Resolution Number 54, 2024, to the June 25th council meeting for a vote.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We presented item Number 5 at the top of the agenda for the Finance Committee, so I will move on to Administration Resolution Number 47, 2024. This is authorizing the sale of 843 Fremont Street. I'll invite, I believe Director Delfts is here to talk about the resolution. Good evening, Director Delfts.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the introduction, Councilor Royal. Yes, for Resolution Number 47, this concerns the property at 843 Fremont Street, which is the location of the former firehouse number six. The resolution authorizes the city administration to put the property out to bid for sale and redevelopment of this property. A few pieces of information related to this particular property. The city administration actually initiated a request for expression of interest. So often, we hear the term RFP. This was an RFEI, a Request for Expression of Interest, related to 843 Fremont Street. This was advertised in LMP and on our PennBid system on April 18th, 2024. We also emailed invitations to developers who we've worked with in the past, common organizations and agencies in the market, a total of 181 entities. The purpose of the RFEI was to gauge interest for the property and to identify potential developers for the site. We actually didn't get any formal responses to that request for expressions of interest. We did have 13 different entities that viewed and downloaded the RFEI document, but no one requested a site visit or submitted an official response by the deadline of May 9th, 2024. One of the main purposes, as I said, was to gauge interest and was to get a sense of what process we should utilize moving forward. Given the fact that we did not get specific feedback from organizations in the field, we decided to go with the most straightforward approach to disposing of and redeveloping the property, which is the Request for Bid process. Again, this resolution is seeking authorization to move forward with that Request for Bid process. I have other details about the site itself, if you're interested. I think most of you are familiar with the site and Southwest Quadrant, but happy to speak to those details if you're interested as well.
Thank you, Director Delfts. As far as the RFP, what do we call it?
Yes.
RFP?
Right, it's a Request for Expression of Interest, RFEI.
Sir, is there any, like, are there any guidelines that we built into that process to kind of help shape what the potential vision of the site could be, or is this kind of leaving it up to the developers to bring to us?
I would say both. We did indicate that, we left it fairly open-ended, because we did want to test the market and see what interest was out there for redeveloping the site. On the other hand, we were very clear that the, any potential developers would be guided by what is in the comprehensive plan in terms of any land use and redevelopment. And in fact, it's worth noting that the current zoning is R3, which is medium-density residential. And in fact, in the comprehensive plan, we do have some areas in the city that have been designated for land use change. In this particular area, it's, we're envisioning that the general land use and intensity there would continue with that R3 zoning.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Any questions or comments from full council?
Councilor Royal.
Council President.
Asking you to look into a crystal ball, any idea of what property you may fetch in terms of a sale price? Have we gotten any sort of appraisal on what it might be?
We have done, not an in-depth appraisal. I can tell you here that the assessed value, which is different than the appraisal, but the assessed value is, for both the improvements and the land, is $509,000. I believe that the appraised value is somewhere in, on the order of $400,000 and something. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. We do recognize that there, it's an old building, there are a number of maintenance issues. The cost for redevelopment on the property will be relatively high, I believe, not as severe as maybe some sites, but I would say it falls somewhere in the middle, sort of a moderate cost for redevelopment. So it's hard to know yet exactly what we'll get. I don't expect that we will get as high as that appraised value, but maybe we'll get even more, I'm not sure. It will see what the level of competition is when we actually put it out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vias?
Real quick, I have a question in regards to, you mentioned that there was a few issues with the property. Do you have some type of an inspection that was already done, or are you looking forward to someone going in and bidding it and just taking it as is?
Oh, thank you, good question. Yeah, I wasn't referring to any particular issues or violations on the site, just the age of the property and the general condition it will cost to rehab that building. If a developer chooses to do some kind of adaptive reuse, or if there's demolition involved, that's always costly as well. So just wanted to note that that is a part of the cost for any developer on the site.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from full council? Any questions from the public? Great, thank you, Director Delfts.
Thank you.
With that, I'll motion to move Administration Resolution Number 47, 2024, to full council on June 11th.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. That concludes the agenda for the Finance Committee, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilor Royal. Next is community planning, Councilor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Community planning has four items on the agenda this evening, first being Administration Resolution 48, adopting the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And I see Rebecca getting ready to set up, so I think you're going to give us more details. Thank you.
Rebecca Geiser, I'm joined here with Bryn McGowan. She is our Community Development Administrator, and she administers our Community Development Block Grant, so she is the technical expert on all things CDBG, so she will be presenting to you this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. We are pleased to present an overview of our proposed FY 2024 Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the utilization of our 2024 Community Development Block Grant allocation for your review and consideration. Before we get into the allocation details for this year, we would like to present a brief refresh of our CDBG program. The CDBG program, which is administered by HUD, provides annual grants to entitlement communities such as ourselves to help develop viable urban communities by providing funding that supports the provision of affordable housing, improving the quality of life, and economic development opportunities, principally for the benefit to low and moderate income residents. HUD authorizes CDBG to be spent on the following eligible community development activity categories: affordable housing preservation and production, public infrastructure improvements, public services, economic development, in addition to eligible planning and administration costs. So this is the framework through which we are planning programs and allocating our CDBG dollars to support community development in our city. This process follows a five-year, goal-focused, consolidated planning cycle that provides HUD with a big-picture unified strategy of our main housing and community development goals and our planned projects. For each year within the consolidated plan cycle, the city must submit its annual action plan for meeting these goals and for funding approved projects based on the grant allocation amount for that year, for their review and approval to HUD after providing for public comment and city council adoption. So our current consolidated plan runs from 2021 to 2025, with 2024 the plan that we will come to you with today being the fourth annual action plan in this cycle. So next, we really want to highlight some of the high-level outcomes that have been collectively achieved by our CDBG programs in 2023 to demonstrate the communal impact of the CDBG program in furthering the strategic initiatives of the city related to housing, quality of life, and overall community development in a resource-constrained environment. So from this slide, you can see that our CDBG-supported projects benefited over 53,000 Lancaster City residents in 2023. Of that total, 1,342 people were provided with a direct benefit through seven CDBG-supported programs, and of that direct benefit total, 630 households received direct affordable housing benefit through our various housing-related programs, with approximately 91% of the direct benefit city residents being of low and moderate income. So for example, this past year, we used CDBG to fund a variety of really impactful programs, both internally and externally, to help serve residents, which included some partner activities, community partner activities for Fair Housing Provision with Tenfold, small business development with Assets, and affordable housing rehabilitation projects with both SACCA and Partners of Purpose. So in addition to those projects, we also were able to fund some core internal services like the Police Social Worker Program, the city's impactful critical repair program, the proactive housing code enforcement program, as well as supporting the work of the comp plan. So due to the demonstrated success of our CDBG programming in 2023, we're planning to continue to invest CDBG dollars to support these types of programs and initiatives in So moving into our FY 2024 CDBG grant allocation, HUD has awarded the city $1,451,253 in CDBG entitlement funding for 2024 to support priorities that we identified within our current consolidated plan. Unfortunately, this represents about a 5% or around $73,000 reduction in our anticipated CDBG resources for this year, assuming level funding from last year. In addition to this entitlement amount, we're also projecting we're going to receive around $25,000 in program income from loans that are given out through the Critical Repair and Lead Hazard Control Program projects, bringing our total FY 2024 CDBG resources to $1,476,253. So given this reduced funding scenario, we're proposing an allocation strategy that really prioritizes funding projects that support and furthers the administration's strategic plan and comp plan focus areas, ensures that we're still able to meet the community development objectives that we set out in our 2021 to 2025 Consolidated Action Plan, and continues to maximize community impact while minimizing any adverse impact to the general fund. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Rebecca to provide additional context.
Just want to say a word of thanks to Bryn for all of her detailed work on this budget that she's presenting today. Since 2020, we've seen a reduction of $232,000 in CDBG, and year over year, we're trying to maximize that impact in the community despite the reduction. And Bryn continues to look at that detailed budget every year and really shuffles things around, which is quite a detailed process. So I just want to express my thanks to her for the budget that she's presenting to you today, and the ways that she's been able to work with internal departments and external partners to maximize the impact of these dollars in this resource-constrained time of CDBG.
Thank you, Rebecca. So through an extensive community engagement effort that we conducted in 2020, the city identified four priority goal areas for the 2021 to 2025 CDBG funding to support through designing and implementing HUD-eligible and approved programs and activities. So our current CDBG-focused goals are to maintain affordable, quality housing, increase affordable housing opportunities, promote neighborhood quality of life, and to expand economic opportunities. With our allocation in 2024, we're proposing, oh, sorry, got ahead of myself. We're proposing to allocate $615,000 to maintain quality affordable housing, around $148,000 to increasing affordable housing opportunities, around $423,000 to promoting neighborhood quality of life, $20,000 to expanding economic opportunities, and $270,000 for planning and administration costs. So this funding not only supports the goals set out in our current consolidated plan despite a funding constraint, but it also reflects an overall consistency with the CDBG funding framework that we've laid out over the last three years. So the specific CDBG activities that are supporting our goals are provided on the right hand of the slide, but greater detail is provided on the handout that we've given and is also available for the public over here regarding the specific proposed funding levels for each activity. So looking at the pie chart on this slide, we can see that more than half of our 2024 allocation will be invested in maintaining quality affordable housing and increasing affordable housing opportunities. We're also going to continue our support for key community partners by providing CDBG funding to Tenfold's Fair Housing Program, Assets Small Business Development Work, and for nonprofit affordable housing developers through the Affordable Housing Development So in addition to that, we will continue to fund core city programming that- planning efforts in the development of the East End Small Area and Sunnyside Master So you can access our full proposed draft twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan through a few ways. We have a hard copy available here at City Hall. You can also follow the URL on the screen or navigate to the plan itself on the city's website. It's housed within CityGov, the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development, toggled to the Health, Housing, and Community Development Division within the Bureau of Lead Safety and Community Development, and then you'll go to the bottom of the page, select Documents and Resources, and that's where the draft twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan is housed. So the city will accept public comments on our draft twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan until July first, twenty twenty-four. We invite members of the public to review and provide their feedback. There'll also be an opportunity to provide comments at the end of this presentation from both council and the public, or you can also submit any comments to me using the contact information on the screen. And then before we close, we just wanted to give a couple of CDBG portfolio updates for everyone to look forward to. As we shared previously, twenty twenty-four represents year four of our current five-year consolidated plan with a new planning cycle on the horizon. So with that being said, we're going to be kicking off a renewed community engagement effort in twenty twenty-five to help define our priorities for the new comp plan cycle from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. And then with one year left in our current plan, we're really looking at strategically assessing the current portfolio impact and evaluating how best to maximize use of our CDBG resources through the remainder of the plan in twenty twenty-five. So thank you, everyone, for listening to this high-level summary of our twenty twenty-four Annual Action Plan. As a reminder, the full plan is available on our website and in a hard copy version, which contains greater detail about our planned usage of our twenty twenty-four CDBG allocation. So now we'll just open it up to any questions.
Thank you so much, Bryn, for your in-depth presentation. Are there any questions from members of the committee?
Counselor Craig, if I may. Just want to make a note, since Assets is named as a potential -- potentially being funded through this project, and as an employee of the organization, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote on this resolution.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the remaining members of the committee? Full counsel.
Counselor Craig. Can I -- just a quick clarification. The slides were a little different than the handout in terms of the pie chart?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that the numbers we're seeing, you mentioned over half, were going to the maintaining quality and affordable housing. That was represented on what we see here as fifty-two percent. Is that the accurate number?
Yes, so that's the pie chart on the handout is related to eligible activity area, where the pie chart in the presentation is goal-oriented.
Got it. I understand now. Thank you very much. And just as a follow-up with that, is the twenty twenty-three plan available just to compare? I know, obviously, there's a reduction in these funds every year, which is incredibly disappointing, but I'm just curious where each one stacks up against the other year over year. Is that available?
It is. It's all on the city website.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from counsel?
If I may.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Greg. So thank you for the presentation. How do you ensure that all the programs and initiatives funded through the Community Development Block Grant are inclusive and accessible for all members of the community, including those with limited English proficiency and disabilities?
Great question. So as a federally-funded program, we have to have our materials available in various languages. So for example, our Critical Repair and Lead Hazard Control Programs have materials available in Spanish as well, and I think there's an onus on some of the programs that we fund to ensure that the information is equitably distributed through various methods. I think right now, most of the information we have is available electronically and through word of mouth, but we similarly fund a health and housing social worker, who is a resource for the city to help support limited English proficiency residents, as well as for residents to be able to access the information that may not be as readily available to them due to various reasons.
And what measures do you take to make sure that those funds are used effectively and efficiently?
So we have various measurements that we use to do that. We are -- by HUD, we are supposed to have a timely expenditure of the funding that not only measures how we're spending the funding, but if we're meeting different metrics and goals that we've established on the plan level. So if you go into the plan level, it has some target metrics and measurable performance outcomes that we're striving to achieve. So every year, we are measured against those, and HUD asks us to make a report to it, so we are held accountable to not only spending the money well, but meeting the goals that we have established on an activity level.
Maybe I can offer one more point of interest here, that Bryn has put in a lot of time over the past couple of years interacting with each and every, both internal and external grantee, to talk about how the program dollars are being spent, how they're eligible within HUD, and also the equity piece. So looking across the entire portfolio, how are we spreading it across the activities, as well as who is benefiting from those programs? And as a requirement, we need to collect the actual participants of the program as low or moderate income. So our staff and partners are collecting income data for each participant when they are directed directly to an individual, collecting income levels as well. So those are a couple of additional measures that we're taking to ensure equity across our programs.
Could you please elaborate a little bit more about those numbers? How did you come up with those numbers, these percentages?
For the eligible activity area?
Yes.
Yeah, so I did it based on the allocation that we got this year and the type of eligible activity that we're allocating, the budget for each of the specific activities within those eligible general CDBG areas. But I can provide you with more detail on that. If you look at the broken-down budget on the handout, that provides you with the information on what type of activity it is, and then the amount that we're proposing to allocate, and that's where the pie chart is formed from.
I'll say as well that the consolidated plan, as Bryn mentioned, is a five-year plan, so there's extensive community engagement for that consolidated plan, and then throughout the past four years now, we've been doing other types of community engagement to vet, whether that is still applicable or not applicable in terms of community priorities. So affordable housing was identified as one of the major priorities in the consolidated plan, and we've seen that borne out time and again with the ARPA engagement, comprehensive plan engagement. So we've been grateful that what we identified four years ago in terms of city priorities has remained rather constant, and so each year, we're allocating those dollars based on the five-year plan from twenty twenty-one.
So we know that some of the communities have more needs than others. So how do you manage, you know, to have, for example, excuse me, those numbers in order to satisfy those needs of the communities who are really, really need?
Good question.
I think that's a really big challenge for us, because we are limited in the resources that we receive every year, and they just keep getting smaller and smaller. I think we have to make sure that we're providing a majority of the benefit to low-income residents and meet the needs of the community that we've identified through this community engagement process, but also reassess as we move along and as we get through this next consolidated action plan, kind of gauge how impactful some of our investments have been and where we need to potentially increase some of our investments across the board and into a more strategic support mechanism for the community.
Did anybody go in those areas to evaluate, for example, their needs, or you only referred to data in order to?
So I wasn't here at the time, but I believe it was a more concerted effort when they were conducting the initial community engagement for this consolidated action plan, to go into the community in a more intentional way and ask residents where they see most of the needs in the city being, and then to allocate money and identify our goal priorities from that.
If I may.
Anybody who was here during that time?
Yeah, if I may, council colleagues, I think the main point to the presentation and the outline of priorities is that they're all housing-related. And we heard that in the outreach that we did specifically to this plan, but even more so, even more loudly, during the development of the comprehensive plan. It was the number-one issue. It is why council made the significant investments it did into affordable housing with ARPA funds. And so these funds have been consistently, going back to previous administrations, been reduced over time. So I just want to be clear about that, so we're facing another five percent reduction, and have been invested into maintaining our housing stock, which is the largest expenditure here, which I believe attributes to the strength of our neighborhoods and strengthening, continued strengthening through Critical Repair and so on. And as you recall, we have received additional funding for Critical Repair and have been working with Tenfold, as you recall, to help those who are in a situation where they can pay alone, but also provide grant funding to preserve existing housing stock. So this is all wrapped up in our comprehensive plan, in our interim housing strategy for the preservation of existing affordable housing, and this funding is foundational to those elements, and I just want to underscore and appreciate the work of the Community Planning and Economic Development, including Bryn and Rebecca, for seeing this through, because unfortunately, these federal funds are incredibly arduous to administer, and there is just an incredible amount of documentation, and our team works very closely with residents who are utilizing CDBG funds to make sure that we take on that burden and make the process as easy as possible for them.
Thank you, Mayor. So if you could provide a little bit more information about the numbers and the measures that you're taking in order to make sure that, you know, the funds are being used efficiently and effectively, we'd really appreciate it.
We can also send out, following this meeting, we just submitted the CAEPER, which is the annual plan, annual report for how we spent the money in twenty twenty-three, and the funding will be similar in twenty twenty-four. So if you can see in detail who was served by which of these programs in twenty twenty-three, and we have carried forward more or less very similar percentages. So we can send out the link to the CAEPER report for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Counselor Greg. No further questions.
Thank you, Counselor.
In regards to affordable housing, what do you refer to as affordable?
So we are, right now, within the HUD regulations, affordable housing is defined as anything that is affordable to a family based on household size under eighty percent area median income. So it really depends on the household size of the family in Lancaster County, as well as the level of income, but if they're under eighty percent area median income for their household size, then the affordable housing calculation, it's a very complicated calculation that goes into determining whether or not it's affordable, but that will -- when this funding is utilized, it will spit out some sort of affordability provision for either rental or homeowner to ensure that the family is not burdened by housing costs that's over thirty percent of their income.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from counsel as a whole? Did I hear correct when I said -- when I -- did I hear -- when you said that the amount received had been decreased by, was it seventy-three thousand?
That's correct.
All right. I have no further questions. Any questions from the public?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Irene Grevas. On the four-hundred block of West End Avenue, I'm hearing about the Critical Repair Program. I've been going to the Property Reinvestment Board now for over two years, and neither Counselor Hearst or Rebecca Geiser have mentioned to any of these properties that their properties were being blighted and taken away. There's no soft landing, in fact, it's hard landing, on how to take the property away. Nothing was being offered for the Critical Repair Program to help these residents stay in their home. At the last Property Reinvestment Board, there were at least six properties that were all blighted, and Mr. Hearst, I'm just -- I am so appalled and outraged that none of this ARPA funding or Critical Repair Program funding that's available to residents is being offered by anybody by the city unless they find out on their own. Ms. Geiser had nothing to say pertaining to this Property Reinvestment Board and the Critical Repair Program that's available to these residents to keep their home. Instead, the properties were blighted and taken away with no way out, and these property owners had no knowledge of what's available to them. And I'm making every effort available on my own to make these property owners aware that there is funding available, since no one from the city is offering it, none of the inspectors are suggesting it, none of the -- no one from the city has offered any of these funding, ARPA funding that's available to these residents, including myself, actually. I applied. I'm being told that it does not apply for a rental unit. Well, why not? At the latest city council meeting, it was for a rental unit, but now all of a sudden, because it's me, it's selective for aristocrats, I guess, or for priority. So this ARPA funding or the Critical Repair Program, it's not being available to the residents. It's only people that come to these meetings that find out about it, and it's a word of mouth, and, you know, passing the word along to other people, but no one from the city is certainly passing this information along. To people that desperately need it, there was, at the last Property Reinvestment Board, there was an eighty-two-year-old woman with her disabled son, and yet, her property was blighted. One of the collaborators and allies from the contractor ended up buying her property.
Thank you so much for your comment, but we are entertaining questions that have to do with the Block Grant Action Plan?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Geiser, could you -- or Bryn, actually, could you refresh on who is eligible for, excuse me, Critical Repair? We did discuss that in a recent meeting, and I just want to be clear about what the answer to that question is.
It's scattered-site homeowners, single-family homeowners who are eighty percent or less than -- who have eighty percent or less than area median income based on family size.
And so not rental units?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. And that's a condition of the federal dollars?
That's how the program is currently designed, but it's not a condition of the federal dollars.
And Critical Repair dollars are not ARPA dollars, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We did discuss that in a recent meeting, and I just want to be clear about what the answer to that question is.
Um, it's scattered site homeowners, single-family homeowners who are 80% or less than, who have 80% or less than area, area median income based on family size.
And so not rental units?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. And that's a condition of the federal dollars?
That's how the program is currently designed, but it's not a condition of the federal dollars.
And critical repair dollars are not ARPA dollars, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor.
Absolutely.
Um, that might not be fully accurate because I know there was an ARPA allocation for critical repair program.
They outlined the allocation that they had passed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It looked like you wanted to say something, Ms. Hearst.
Uh, I was going to ask a question because, uh, I actually do believe the city is communicating these programs, uh, when they meet with the property owners, uh, through the process of developing every rehabilitation agreement and/or, um, you know, going through that process. Is that correct?
Sure, I can answer that question. So between the time when the property is condemned until when the property first comes before property reinvestment board, our, both our inspectors and the administrative staff, the bureau chief and the housing supervisor are in contact or attempting to contact the homeowners to talk to them about the requirements to lift the condemnation and for the programs. And if they're, if they make contact, they are providing all the information about what is required to pull the property out of condemnation as well as permitting processes and the programs that are available through the city if they are eligible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from council as a whole? I'll, I'll make a motion to move this, move resolution, um, 48, 2024 to full council on the 11th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is going to be administration resolution number 49, amending the sewage facility plan to include the routine, uh, routine shelter project. And I think, would that be you, Douglas? Thank you.
Good evening, councillors. Good evening, Mayor. I'm Douglas Smith, chief planner for the City of Lancaster. So this is a routine sewer capacity approval that is before you for the Outer Vine Methodist Church. This is the property, uh, this is the owner that has agreed to host, um, the county housing redevelopment authorities' efforts to house our unhoused population. They're aiming to provide 80 beds at this location in the basement of the current church. So this will be an adaptive reuse project. Those 80 beds and the staff that will be assigned to help operate, that use will need additional sewer capacity. There will be some new bathrooms as well installed in the basement to accommodate the use. So that, uh, in addition to the fire suppression line that has to be installed for improved fire safety in the building, um, those things will require new water and sewer capacity. So our engineers have looked at this and are, uh, have approved its use and said, say that we do have capacity for this, and this certainly does meet our planning commission goal, uh, sorry, our comprehensive plan, uh, goals of providing better housing for those in need in the city.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the committee? Questions from council as a whole?
If I may, um, the, this is, you mentioned that this is considered adaptive reuse. The rest of the building is still being used as a church facility, is that right? Or no, am I mistaken?
Yes, you, you're right about that. I think that there is actually some unused, um, portions of the building directly above the space that they're going to be renovating. So I think maybe on the, by the time you get to the second floor, there's some empty space. So there has been discussion about whether any of that space can be put to good use in the future, although it's unplanned. The, the one addition to the building, I'll note, is that a, an elevator tower has to be installed to accommodate an accessible entrance into the basement. So that is the one new, uh, piece of new construction for this building. It's a small footprint, it's in the back, and historical commission has already provided their approvals, uh, and you signed off on that certificate of appropriateness. And they received a land development waiver as well.
Thank you for that comment.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Are there any further questions from council? Great. I'll make a motion that we move, uh, administration resolution 49, number 49, 2024 to full council on the 11th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda this evening is administration bill number seven, authorize, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement for the train station small area planning. And Director Delft is on his way to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilor Craig. I had a feeling you were going to call me, so I started moving. Um, yes, that, thank you again for that introduction. This resolution, uh, before the council tonight is seeking authorization to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Manheim Township to adopt the train station small area plan. This small area plan was completed in August of last year. It's actually been some ti, it's taken some time for us to coordinate the mechanics with Manheim Township to bring this, uh, back before city council. Also, uh, right after we finished this plan, we were in, uh, the heart of the comprehensive plan adoption process and, uh, did not want to confuse the two matters. And in fact, uh, the small area plan and the comprehensive plan mutually reinforce one another. The comp plan does designate, uh, the train station area, um, as a, a commercial hub for the city and a land use change area. So th, this is one of the few areas that we already had a small area plan underway and knew that was happening during the comprehensive plan. This, this, uh, I'm sorry, did, I called this a resolution, and that was incorrect. This is actually a bill. This requires two readings. The city can, uh, enter into an intermunicipal agreement either by ordinance or by resolution. Our solicitor advised that we enter into this particular intermunicipal agreement via, uh, ordinance because it has, uh, some legislative nature to it. The, the, the agreement contemplates, uh, adjusting zoning ordinances in the future, aligning, uh, infrastructure, uh, streetscape guidelines and things of that nature with Manheim Township. So, uh, this particular action, uh, entering in, authorizing the agreement is going to take two readings. We're actually going to be back before council with a complimentary resolution to adopt the plan itself. So, uh, we actually have two, two things happening, uh, two actions happening for essentially the same plan. I'll entertain any questions. The last thing I want to note is just the, uh, the calendar that we have coming up, uh, before us, um, on Wed, this Wednesday, June 5th, the planning commission will get a recap of this particular small area plan because it has been some time since, um, the community has, um, has engaged on it. That, um, at that time, the planning commission will be providing a recommendation to council on adoption, uh, of the plan itself. So we'll actually be back before, uh, city council on June 11th related to the intermunicipal agreement. And then we also, as I, I stated, will have, uh, a resolution for the adoption of the plan coming up in the future, too. The, uh, the lead agency for this plan, uh, was actually the, the county, uh, planning department, and there was a close partnership with Manheim Township and with city, uh, staff as well. So the county, uh, county planners will be here on June 11th to give a short presentation on the plan as well. No presentation on the plan, uh, tonight, but wanted to get that process straight because it's a little bit complicated.
Great. Are there any questions from the committee?
Good evening, Your Excellency. Thank you for the presentation. How will this agreement benefit the community?
Uh, yes, thank you. Because this particular area spans two jurisdictions, the boundaries in this area around the train station are really wacky. And there's some, some of the land falls on the city side, some of the land falls on the Manheim Township side. And in fact, that has, uh, caused some real trouble for community organizations and developers in the past because, uh, we don't have a unified set of standards for land development in this area. So the intent is that we are agreeing to use this plan, uh, as a planning instrument for the area that we both can adhere to.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Lee.
Are there any further questions from council as a whole?
Thank you, Councilor Craig, and, uh, thank you, Director Delft. Uh, my only question is, um, how do we ensure the good faith on both parties, like, years from now, you know, there may be different players, um, at the township commissioner level or at the planning, uh, department? How do we ensure that this, um, the separability of this is long-term?
Yep, that's a great question. Uh, and, and that is indeed why we decided to bring this before both legislative bodies. Uh, we're, we're seeking to pass this through city council. Manheim Township is also bringing it before, uh, their legislative body. To be clear, this agreement is, uh, intended to adopt the planning tool. So it is not, um, it is not binding either party to, um, particular zoning changes yet. But the intent is that the city would pursue, I'm using zoning as an example, uh, that the city might pursue zoning changes that, uh, helped to realize the plan. Uh, and then likewise, Manheim Township, uh, would adopt zoning adjustments that would also realize the plan. So the plan itself, um, is important to, um, set this standard that we're moving, we're moving together, uh, but it's not, it's not binding, uh, from a, from a legislative standpoint related to zoning.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Sure. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from, from council?
If I may, Councilor Lee. Um, is this, is, this by chance, and I'm not sure if it's pertaining to the lawsuit that Manheim Township has sued the city for, is that anything related to that?
Nope. This is not related, uh, to any lawsuit. And in fact, uh, the, the planning bureau has contemplated doing additional small area plans in, in the future for areas that we've designated in need of planning. So for example, we're, um, getting underway, uh, will be getting underway with the East End Small Area Plan. Uh, this is a good template and model for a small area planning process. This is just a little bit different and more complicated because it spans across two jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Councilor Diaz, are you referring to the stormwater issues?
Yeah, I think I'm getting it confused. Both of them stating that, because they reached out to me and said that they were suing the city, and I wasn't sure because they're both cross saying if I had anything to do with that.
I'm not aware of any lawsuit. Could you please, um, let me know what correspondence you've had? I'm not aware of any lawsuit from the, from Manheim Township.
Okay.
And Ms. Diaz, it's a good question also because in addition to zoning, that this smaller area plan does contemplate other things related to land development. I, I'd mentioned streetscape guidelines, infrastructure is a big one, too. So, uh, there are questions related to, uh, infrastructure and, and how we coordinate across the boundaries. But, uh, this doesn't have anything to do with, uh, any, any legal, uh, action.
And would this cross at all with, um, some of the, um, federal state? I'm not sure how it's coordinated when it has to do with the transportation, with impact?
Yes.
So.
That, yeah, uh, that, that's a terrific question. We, um, our coordination with the county, uh, is valuable on a number of fronts. One of the important parts is that, uh, they serve as the liaison to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Any plan that is adopted carries more weight in the metro, uh, in, in how the Metropolitan Planning Organization recommends projects up to the state. So adopting, uh, this as a formal plan gives it more weight when we're seeking funding from PennDOT.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from council as a whole? Are there any questions from the public? Great. Thank you, Mr. Delft. I'll, I'll make a motion to move, um, administration bill number seven to full council on the 11th.
Right? Is it the 11th?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Um, the next item on our agenda this evening is administration resolution number 52, amending the cooperation agreement for the College Avenue Project Grant. Director Campbell. How are you doing?
Good. Good evening again. Um, this is a cooperation agreement related to the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, or RACP, grant that, uh, the College Avenue Project received for one and a half million. And this is an amendment due to a mistake that I made, so I'm just going to admit that now. But, um, the city, the city serves as a grantee for these grants, for the RACP grants. So a cooperative agreement is the agreement between the city and the sub-grantee, um, you know, to ensure that the sub-grantee is aware of all of the conditions and the compliance requirements of the grant. This resolution and the co-op agreement were approved and executed for this, um, project, for the College Avenue Project back in April of 2023. However, the agreement and resolution listed the wrong name of the sub-grantee. So the name listed was College Avenue Property Holding, and the accurate name is College Avenue Property Holdings Company LLC. So we're bringing it to you as an amendment, um, to get that name corrected tonight.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Questions from council as a whole?
Councilor Craig. Thank you for admitting that. Takes a big person to do that. Other than the name change, there is no changes to the agreement that we have already approved last year. Correct? Yeah. Thank you.
And are there any questions from, any other further questions from council as a whole? Questions from the public? Great. Thank you, Director Campbell. Um, I'll make a motion to move resolution number 52, amending the cooperation agreement for the College Avenue Project Grant to full council on the 11th.
Second.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Council President. That concludes community planning for this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll now move to the Public Works Committee. Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee has two items tonight. Both are to authorize intergovernmental agreements, uh, with neighboring municipalities, Manheim Township and Eastland Peter Township respectively, uh, for the city's bike share, Bike It, uh, Bike Share Program, um, which the city is seeking to expand to our neighbors to the north and to the east. Carl Graybill from Public Works is here to give a brief presentation on it.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Carl Graybill. I'm the environmental planner for the Department of Public Works. And, uh, I'll just give you a real brief overview of the Bike It Bike Share Program, um, that we have in the city. It's a, um, micro-mobility. It provides options for, uh, transportation, uh, for people in the city. Currently, we have 11 bike share stations, they're docking stations, uh, 50 bicycles, pedal bicycles that are available, uh, throughout the city. On the map, uh, presented here, the blue dots are the existing bike share stations. They're, they're located throughout the city. And the other, uh, points show the planned expansion over the next five years. The Manheim Township and Eastland Peter Township both, uh, desire to participate in the program. They've requested this expansion. It is being, initially, it will be funded through a CMAC program, which is congestion management and air quality from the Lancaster County MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, for the next five years. And it will allow us to expand outside of the city and into the, the county. And as you can see, the, at, as I mentioned, there's 50 bicycles now, 11 stations. We will be adding, uh, several stations and bicycles every year. And at build-out, we will have 36 stations and 180 bicycles. And that will be a combination of pedal bicycles and e-bikes. Uh, those are pedal-assist e-bikes. They are not throttled, so you must pedal to, to make them go. They are not throttled, so you must pedal to, to make them go. And I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Graybill. I just have one brief question. I know you talked about how CMAC is going to be covering through the next three years. Can you just briefly discuss, like, what the funding strategy is going to be in the long-term when those, when those funds maybe expire?
We have had Bike Share in the city since 2017. Bike Share has been funded primarily through sponsorships, local businesses. Current sponsors are Franklin and Marshall College and Lancaster General Health. They, they provide that, that sponsorship. Over the next five years, during this expansion program, we will be continuing to seek sponsorships, additional sponsorships, title sponsorships, which could be half or more of the, of the system, as well as individual sponsors for just a, a five bikes and a Bike Share Station. And we'll be working with our partners as part of the responsibility that, that are the, our partners, the townships, will also be soliciting that and working with potential businesses. Number of these are located at businesses that they will be able to sponsor those.
Thank you. I think it's one of those things where it gets more valuable as the network expands, you know? And in the same way, you have more solicitation for the sponsorships, you get more municipalities involved, so I think it's great. Any questions from members of the Public Works Committee? From council as a whole?
Council Hirsch.
Yes.
Carl, thank you for being here. I'm excited about the expansion of the program, but it's difficult for me to conceptualize exactly where these fall. Do you have, without seeing the street names and stuff, do you have a list of what these locations are that you could provide council?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I would really be curious. And then to follow up on that, did the municipalities pick these locations?
Yes.
That's where they wanted them.
Yeah, we worked, we worked with the municipalities to help identify the proper location, and we're working through that process right now with PennDOT, since that's the funder.
Great. Thank you.
Council Hirsch, if I may. Thank you for the presentation. Just as this is going to be an intergovernmental agreement, is there going to be any contributions made from the municipalities?
Yes. Yes. Initially, given that the funding is a 80% grant, in a sense, it's a grant, the municipalities will contribute 20% of their cost at this time.
Fair. And that concludes my questions.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions from full council? Any questions or comments from the public?
Tim Stulder, One United Lancaster. Expected implementation date and annual budget? Expected implementation date and what is the annual budget for the program at full build-out?
Okay, I prepared myself for that one. The implementation, and I can quickly run through this, we will start implementing the expansion this year, in 2024. We should see possibly four new stations, 20, 20 bicycles. It could be six new stations and 30 bicycles coming out. We're hoping that we can swap out 25 of the pedal bicycles we have now for e-bikes. In 2025, we anticipate an additional three to five stations, and each station has five bicycles, so that would be anywhere between 15 and 25 bicycles. In 2026, an additional five stations, 2027, three stations, and in 2028, the last five stations. At the time when that is, the last of the, the stations and bicycles are rolled out, there will be a total cost for, for this, providing this Bike Share Program will be $637,000. That's estimated. We can't anticipate the full increases, of the annual increases, but that's what's estimated now.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Just come right up if you have any comment.
I have a question. I live at the 600 block of Southwest End. What measures are being taken to ensure that sidewalks and public walkways remain accessible?
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone again?
Sorry. Just your name for the meeting record. Megan McNeil, on the 600 block of Southwest End. What measures are being taken to make sure that the sidewalks and other public walkways remain accessible for people with wheelchairs and other mobility aids?
And, and you mean with regard to the Bike Share Program?
Yes.
The Bike Share stations are not located on sidewalks. If they are located on sidewalks, as that College Avenue and Marietta current station we have there, we made sure we had enough clearance, minimum clearance for ADA would be five feet, and we would maintain that at all times.
My name is Max Kornhauser, and I'm just, what's going to prevent, or what measures will be taken to prevent bikes from all just ending up at one of the faraway stations?
If it's that popular, we might see a lot of bicycles going to that station. Currently, with the 11 stations we have and the 50 bicycles, we get maintenance every other week. So that means that the bicycles are, are looked at, they're maintained. If they need any adjustments or find tuning, that is done, as well as the stations are balanced, so that we make sure that all, all the bikes aren't in, at one station. So the, the contractor that is, is contracted by our vendor, a local bike shop owner, makes sure that the, the stations are balanced, so there'll be five, they try to make sure there's five, at least five bikes at each station.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Thank you very much, Mr. Graybill. Clerk, am I able to move these at the same time? Okay. Hearing no other comments, I would like to make a motion to move resolution number 50 and resolution number 51 to the full meeting of council on June 11th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Council Hirsch. Okay, we have reached the end of our agenda. We have a clerk's report. Mr. Harris, have you submitted that in writing to all members of council?
I have, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Then, reaching the end of our agenda for this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn. Thank you. Yeah, I'll tell you, buddy.